Good evening, everyone. My name is David Freese. I'm the mayor of Tongonoxi. Calling to order, well, I guess I can't call this to order until we have quorum, so we're waiting on one more council member. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll wait five minutes and see how that goes.
Ms. Stevens is here.
Okay, now that we have quorum, a call to order this August 18th, 2025, meeting of the Tongonoxi City Council. Ms. Huntington, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Partridge?
Here.
Ms. McCutcheon's absent. Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Donnelly's absent. Mr. Dale?
Here.
Would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is the approval of minutes, in which we review the minutes from the regular meeting dated August 4th, 2025. Are there any questions or concerns about the minutes? If not, I would accept a motion to approve or deny.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item three on the agenda is the consent agenda, in which we review the bill payments from the previous month. Are there any questions or concerns regarding the real bill payments in your packet? If there are no questions or conversation, I entertain a motion to approve or deny.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to item four, old business. We don't have anything listed. Mr. Porter, did anyone sign up to speak?
Mayor, we have one sign up this evening, and Tyler Hill is here.
Okay. I will remind the speaker that we have a three-minute time limit on public comments, and I don't think I have a clock, so I'll just...
Do we have a timer?
Well, staff will set a timer, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Sorry. My name is Tyler.
Could you give us your name and your full name and address, please?
My name is Tyler Hill. I live at 140 Ridge Street, Unit C, Tongonoxi, Kansas.
Okay.
Hello, members of the city council. My name is Tyler Hill, and I wish I was coming to you with better news on some events that happened in Tongonoxi. Sadly, my ask today will be that the city council launch a full investigation into the dealings of Dale Allen from the Cornerstone Church and Gretchen Mulner, owner of the Life Daycare, who is also a Cornerstone Church member, towards Heather from Tongi Tykes and Mr. Olson, a former Cornerstone Church member. Heather has twice had contracts signed for her current space and the rest of the building, the former youth center. Both of these contracts have been reneged on after signed, which, I'm no lawyer, but that really seems illegal to me. Mr. Olson took Heather's side as Dale treated her horribly, getting to the point where he removed himself from the church. The church's response to this served him legal papers to ban him from Tongi Tykes property and a direct phone call from Dale, keeping him from visiting the church, alienating him from his second family and at the church. I'm asking that the whole process of the Life Daycare going into the space that Tongi Tykes is currently residing in is checked over to make sure there is no corruption or illegal behavior. I ask this because Fire Marshal Curtis was in the final steps of transferring a fire permit from Heather to Gretchen. Only thing is, Heather never approved this or knew about it until an email at the final step. Statements made by Gretchen in public and to people around the Tongi Tykes area, or Tongi Tykes building, state that she would use her power, money, and influence to bypass the processes put in place, and the fire permit issue seems to confirm that this was happening. The whole situation that Dale and Gretchen have put Heather, her teachers, Mr. Olson, and the families of the Tongi Tykes children, Tongi Tykes children through has been, at best, shady and, at worst, illegal. I say this because pouring epoxy on the former youth center's side while the daycare is still in process without proper ventilation puts children at risk. This could have been, or this could have made children sick beyond all belief. You know, we hold our cops, our firefighters, our politicians, our clergy members, and those who deal with children to a higher moral ethical code. Dale has failed this. Gretchen has failed this, and I'm hoping that, for the children's sake, that when we look back at this, that more people have not failed in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. We'll move on to new business. Item A is the 2024 Audit Report Presentation. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to introduce this item to the city council tonight. I'd also like to note that Kayla Williams, a principal with BT and Co., our city auditing services firm, is on the phone tonight here at my desk, and I'll push the microphone over by the phone when she talks to you in just a few minutes, and she's also welcome to take any questions that you'd like to ask. BT and Co. has completed the city's audited financial statements and presented those to the governing body since the 2021 presenting the 2020 fiscal year report. This year, we worked through a period of several months with Ms. Williams and her team and had a very in-depth and thorough process where we evaluated a lot of different documents, processes, and information, and it culminated in the financial statements that you see at the dais tonight and also that have been posted on the city website. We appreciate their efforts and want to thank them for their attention to detail and communication style throughout this year's audit procedure. Kayla, I'll turn it over to you unless the council have any questions for me.
Okay.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, as Dan mentioned, my name's Kayla Williams. I am an audit principal with BT and Co. First, I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to join you remotely this year. I know it's not ideal, and so if there are any questions that you have or anything that you didn't understand and would like to reach out to me, Dan has my contact information, and I'd be happy to answer any questions via email or a phone call later. Included in your packet for today, you'll find the city's 2024 financial statement as well as a letter that is addressed to the city. Today, I'm primarily going to focus on going over this letter with you. On the first page of this letter, we address our responsibility to perform an audit in accordance with specific accounting standards. Those standards require us to perform procedures to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. Our procedures include examining on a test basis evidence supporting the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements. We also assess the accounting principles used in the significant estimates made by management, as well as evaluate the overall financial statement presentation. In the section titled Accounting Policies and Practices, first, we would bring to your attention anything identified related to significant alternative accounting policies and practices, adoption of or changes in accounting policies, significant or unusual transactions, and there were no items of this type for me to bring to your attention. In the next section, on page two of the letter, we refer to an attachment related to a significant accounting estimate. Now, this is not a new item for the city, but it is new in the report just due to a recent change in our audit methodology. This estimate relates to your net pension liability amount, which is disclosed in the city's footnotes as required by K-MAG. These amounts are footnote disclosures only. They're not part of your actual financial statement numbers. However, they are calculated by an actuary, and as a result, they're deemed to be a significant estimate. Additional information about this estimate is attached at the end of the letter. Continuing on to page, on page two, we note that there was an audit adjustment made as part of the audit process. This adjustment was provided to us by management and is also attached at the end of the letter. In the next section, we would bring to your attention any uncorrected misstatements, and there were none in the current year. Further, on page two, we go on to describe what is considered to be a departure from the auditor's standard report. Because the city has adopted a resolution to report under the requirements of K-MAG, also known as the regulatory basis of accounting, instead of the requirements of US GAAP, we issue an adverse opinion related to US GAAP. Now, don't let this alarm you, as it is expected in audit reports issued under K-MAG. If you look at the audit report itself included in the financial statement document, you'll see that we issue a second opinion on the regulatory basis, and that opinion is unmodified, which is essentially the highest level of opinion that can be issued. So there are no surprises here. It's just something that I'm required to bring to your attention. Back to the letter. If you turn to page three, in the Observations About the Audit Process section, we would bring to your attention any disagreements with management, consultations with other accountants, significant issues discussed with management, significant difficulties encountered in performing the audit, or other difficult or contentious matters that required consultation. There are no such matters that need to be brought to your attention in any of these areas. On pages three and four, there is a section titled Shared Responsibilities for Independence. As an accounting firm, we are required to follow AICPA's independence rules. Independence is a joint responsibility and is managed most effectively when we all work together. So as a result, we just ask that the city informs us before entering into any transactions that may impair our independence. Finally, at the end of this letter, we attached a copy of Management's Representation Letter. This letter puts into writing matters that are required by our standards to be represented to us by the city's management. We provide this letter to you because we believe it will help you, as a governing body, to better understand the city's representations about its financial statement and help you to fulfill your fiduciary responsibilities. Before opening it up for question, I would just like to thank Dan and the rest of the staff for all of their patience and assistance throughout the entire audit process. It can be painful at times, but everything has gone very smoothly this year. Management's always been great to work with, and we just really appreciate your continued business. So with that, are there any questions?
Counsel, do we have any questions? No questions. I didn't catch the last name. No questions, Kayla, so appreciate your work. Looks good.
Fabulous. Well, thank you all very much, and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kayla. We'll talk to you later.
All right. Moving on to item B, Consider Approval of Final Platte for Casey's Subdivision Number Two, generally located at the southwest corner of US 24 Highway and South Park Drive in Tongonoxi, Kansas, 66086. Mr. Brekovich?
Yep. Thanks, Mayor. Staff presented this item at the most recent planning commission, and it did receive unanimous approval from the planning commission with the stipulation for the staff recommendations. Those items are included in the agenda packet for tonight. The engineering team that worked on this project for Casey's is here tonight. They could probably answer any questions, but I wanted to touch on a few things from staff perspective as this project went through planning that I think might be of interest to the city council. First, we did get, there was some outreach from the adjacent neighborhood Fall Creek Villas, primarily from their HOA president with a list of questions. I'll try to recap those as best as I can. So one of the items was related to stormwater and that the neighborhood had concern that some of the stormwater infrastructure that was currently in place wasn't sufficiently handling stormwater runoff coming from this site. So one of the design elements here, and I believe there's a comment from the city engineer, this project actually introduces onsite underground stormwater storage, so it actually reduces the amount of runoff that's even there currently in spite of having development occurring there. So it's kind of checks the box for the neighborhood on that, and like I mentioned, the city engineer reviewed those calculations and the stormwater analysis that was submitted. Secondarily, they, the neighborhood had submitted a petition. This was a first for me for a sound attenuation wall, but the project does have a six-foot wooden fence along with additional landscaping buffer, and that seems to address those concerns. The other components were related to access. The neighborhood had a concern about where access would come in to this site. It does come from the south, full access comes from the southernmost access point. The basis for that, though, is the city of Tongonoxi, along with the city of Baser, years ago, signed a corridor access management agreement with KDOT. So KDOT actually controls the access points to and from 2440. So for this project, along this corridor specifically, there are no new access points given off of 2440. So to allow for things like turning radius, accounting for traffic moving in all directions, the only possible alternative was this access point on the south. There will be a private drive built to city standards that would have a cross-access type easement for the properties that are adjacent to the west. There's some that the developer that sold this property to Casey's still owns, and then there's a large, nearly seven-acre tract just to the west of that. So that would allow for future connectivity should developments occur along the rest of that corridor, like I said, moving to the west. The other thing that, and so I believe that kind of addressed the, what at least at a staff level, we heard from the neighbors. The other thing is more of a design component that Jeff Lawback let us know. So one of the complaints we hear about our current Casey's or the newest Casey's we have kind of on the southwest side of town is that there's not enough distance between the pumps and the parking spaces to the front of the store. And so what we learned was that was a previous Casey's model that was kind of more of a compressed site and allowed for access, a rear-drive access for semis to get to the diesel pumps at that current Casey's. This Casey's won't have any of those components, and the new model will allow actually at least 10 feet more of room between the pumps and the parking spaces to get to the front of the store. So we feel like that will alleviate a lot of the comments or concerns that we get, that it's a tight area there. I think that covers most of the comments, questions that we heard from the neighbors. Be happy to answer any questions from a staff level, or if you have questions directly for the applicants, I'm sure they could respond as well. One, one additional comment, one of our planning commissioners asked that she's heard, and she's also curious, why do we need another Casey's? And so one of those, you know, there's a variety of things that retailers and developers look for in a community. One is rooftops, another is traffic count numbers, and so KDOT just updated with 2025 traffic count maps. The maps before that were from 2022, and for traffic in Tongonoxi, I'll split it into these two Casey's locations. The current one is on the southwest side of town. We've get about 7,000 cars a day there. That's 45% more than what we had in 2022. On the east side of town, we are just under 13,000 cars per day, which is also about a 45% increase from 2022. Why that's important is for a community that's just, let's say, east of us like Baser, by the time they account for the 13,000 cars that are moving out of our community east every day, plus adding their traffic, they get to nearly 18,000 vehicles per day. And retailers have certain thresholds that they look at, and one of those, at least back when I used to be involved in a lot of retail development, you know, 20,000 cars a day opens up, that's a different volume. That's a different set of retailers that are interested in your community. So it's not always rooftops. It's also traffic count. And so if you think about Casey's potentially missing out on nearly doubling the amount of vehicles per day, there's going to be a C-store that has interest there. It just so happened to be that they were the ones that had interest in purchasing this. So I thought that was kind of an interesting comment from a planning commissioner and wanted to make sure we shared that with you tonight. So, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brekovich. You said the applicant is here?
So Jeff Lawback, their engineer on the project, is here and available to answer any questions.
Sir, do you have anything to add to what Mr. Brekovich said?
Good evening. Jeff Lawback. That's Stephen here. The civil consultant for Casey's on this project. Yeah, Dan and George did a good job. They kind of took my thunder with the additional space, but so, yeah, the other Tongonoxi store, compared to this one, we're providing another 10 feet, which is the Casey's standard between the pumps and the front of the store. So another 10 feet there to maneuver, and then on the, between the pumps and the curb line towards the street is another five feet. So a total of 15 feet for maneuver room. The only other different, or things I could, I thought of after the last meeting to kind of bring up, that, you know, the store sizes are pretty similar. So the Tongonoxi one is an O4. I know people are familiar with Lawrence, so the store at Six in Wisconsin, that's also exactly the same size proto. They use tan rather than red on the canopy colors. But if you know the store at Bob Billings in K-10, that's the same proto that they're wanting to build here. So it's very minimal differences from the outside. There's some inside differences, like the O4, you walk in and the cash register and everything is kind of in the middle. The U4, which this new one is, it's kind of off to the right, but pretty minor subtle differences between the two. So yeah, I just wanted to, yeah, bring up those things that don't really have to do with the plat, but thought...
Jeff, one other difference you might just talk about is the number of pumps. It's going to be a little bit different at this location versus the existing, right?
Yeah, so this one has five pumps or 10 fueling positions. I think the one over there has seven pumps or 14 fueling positions. So this one does have less, and I think a lot of that just has gone to Casey's kind of downsizing a little bit, you know, with the construction costs increasing and everything else. They've tried to, you know, condense as much as possible. So kind of during that timeframe, they were, you know, building a little bigger, you know, maybe more than what they need. That's my guess of why they kind of did that reduction, because we see, we do a lot of concept plans for Casey's and plans for them, and yeah, it seems like this size is, the amount of pumps is pretty typical rather than having that many. Yeah, here for, here for any questions?
I have a few questions, but I don't know who answers them. Is this six-foot wall, is that tall enough?
It's a fence, and it meets our city code requirements. Yeah, it's a six-foot tall wooden fence. Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I meant, yeah. And there's a turning lane on 2440 there, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. There is not a direct access to this site off of 2440. So you'll, yeah, you'll make a right turn onto South Park. There is going to be, KDOT has a requirement for a minimum distance to allow for a right-in only, not right-out, just a right-in only, but the full access comes from the south side of the property.
Okay. And...
I was thinking coming from Kansas City direction. There's a center lane for turning.
Right. Right. Okay. When the Dollar, the new Dollar General opened up, there were complaints about light pollution, and I wondered what this Casey's will do to reduce that?
If we haven't already, we'll submit a lighting plan. So the light poles, they have a two-foot base, and then the height of the pole is 15 foot, so a total of 17 feet. They're all LED lights. I don't know what the Dollar General uses, but yeah, I think they're, they're pretty modern, and they have, you know, had to address these before. Plus, with that excess drive and the canopy and everything kind of shift farther north, it does create a little more of a buffer from the lighting compared to, like if it was reversed and the furniture was on the very front and the canopy in the building was shoved farther south. But yeah, we'll meet the city requirements for, for lighting.
Okay. And then one final question, just wondering, will we be planting trees and will you be planting trees and greenery around the new Casey's?
Yeah, we've submitted a landscape plan. The first landscape plan was meeting kind of the minimum code requirements, and then for staff comments, we actually added more landscaping and added more landscaping along the fence as well.
That's great. Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any conversation regarding this?
I think the traffic studies are very interesting.
It's interesting that Baser only contributes 5,000 cars.
They'll come in that...
Yeah, so when you, I guess, it was interesting to see that our growth had been 45%, and then in those same reports, at least for 2440 traffic, their, their two points before you get to Highway 7 was like 30-some percent growth, and then another one was under 10% growth. So that might suggest a lot of Baser's growth is north, further along the K-7 corridor, and perhaps their access points are increasing traffic in those areas, and they're not coming down to 2440.
I see.
But I'm not a traffic expert in general, but especially for Baser.
Neither am I. Any more questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the final plat for the Casey's subdivision number two, generally located at the southwest corner of US 24 Highway and South Park Drive in Tongonoxi.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for investing in Tongonoxi. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to item C, Resolution Number 082501, Acceptance of Drain Easement for Polished and Decorative Concrete. Mr. Brekovich?
Yep. Thanks, Mayor. So this item, you are all probably familiar with the nice new building that was constructed. The owner's gentleman named John Chambers, he lives in the county just outside of city limits. This is his company. He had a facility in Kansas City, Kansas, looked to expand. We're ecstatic that he chose to kind of grow it at home here. Couple of issues with the site, he originally purchased two parcels that needed to be combined into one. That was done, and a surveyor was hired to do that. But he hired a separate engineering company to complete a site plan that had to account for things that included a stormwater detention basin on his site. In his, he was in a rush because he had purchased a building, and he wanted it to be constructed. And so in the rush to get that done, we let him get a little bit ahead in the planning process, and we should have completed this prior to issuing building permit and things of that nature. However, we've, we're at this point, this is the time to correct it. We've engaged with the county staff so that they're aware that these documents are coming, and so there's an administrative plat that needs to be filed, and part of that is accepting this easement. And so we, provided this item gets approved tonight, we'll go finish that coordination with the property owner as well as county staff, ensuring this all gets filed accordingly. Be happy to answer any other questions you might have about it.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 08-25-01, Acceptance of Drain Easement for Polished and Decorative Concrete.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. I heard him first. I apologize. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Item D tonight is consider approval of a traffic study to be conducted in the Timber Hills subdivision. Mr. Brakovic.
Thanks, Mayor. So this item is a follow-up. Earlier this year during our, our budget work sessions or budget discussions, we heard from a resident of Timber Hills that said he was wanting to reduce the speed limit in, in the neighborhood from 30 to 20. He had a petition that was signed by quite a number of the neighbors. So as a quick reminder for our group, our city code says that unless there's design elements or done through plating, neighborhoods are 30. It's kind of a default to the standard traffic ordinances for the state of Kansas. And so, but the request did come forward. We heard from the council a desire to get a formal bid or a formal proposal from the city engineer to get an idea of what the cost would be. And so that's what's before you tonight and is a $5,000 cost. If you look at the scope of services provided and just the general aspects of what traffic studies of this nature would look at, I would just point out a few things. There's existing physical elements of the neighborhood. It's a one-way-in, one-way-out neighborhood. There are no through streets. The, the streets are kind of designed almost serpentine in nature or they have curves. All of those are traffic calming design techniques intended to slow the traffic down. There's curb gutter sidewalk that exists in there. An additional element is examining anything like traffic accidents or calls for service. I did ask our police department to examine the records. I think they went back quite a few, number of years and there had been no calls of service traffic related in that area. So I, while we do have a proposal, I, I would suggest that we may not meet, we know what the elements need to be. And it would appear at the onset, we also have knowledge that we're likely not meet those. One item, or two items that I would again reintroduce here and ask you to consider is, one, last year, the Kansas State Legislature had introduced a bill about allowing cities to go from 30 to 25 without requiring the traffic study, which if I didn't mention it at this meeting, I know we've talked about it before, it is a requirement. You, you have to have a traffic study completed to, to go through this, the exercise or the action of reducing the speed limit. So that bill didn't quite make it through both houses. And so if it gets reintroduced again this year, and we're led to believe that it likely will, if it gets approved and adopted into law, we could easily do that change, go from 30 to 25, based on, on that change. Secondarily, we've, over the course of the last couple of years, have been working with the developer that's looking to develop that remaining eight acres and had, I believe, received preliminary and final plat approval for approximately 40 lots. It's a little bit less than that. And so my, my suggestion was also, as that development, if that development ever moves forward, an additional 40 lots might prompt a different type of engineering review based on how many new vehicles we would be introducing. From a traffic standpoint, that we may want to reexamine and having a one-way-in, one-way-out posted at 30 miles an hour. And, you know, accounting for vehicles parked on the roadway and, and all of those kind of issues. So I, I guess from a staff perspective, I can't say I wholeheartedly recommend moving forward with this because I just don't, I, I, I think we're going to spend money and get an answer that we are already aware of today. And especially with just a few months before the legislative cycle begins again, it, it may be worthwhile to see how that plays out. But I'll stand for any questions and you all are the, the policymakers. So we'll, we'll follow your lead on it. But just wanted to kind of reiterate the things we had talked about in the past. And with that, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Brakovic. Are there any questions or conversation regarding item D?
Well, thank you, George, for doing this for me. And I think I agree with you, obviously. But at least we can say we've, we've made a good faith effort. And if he comes back and wants to address this body, we can say that, we'll say we've done it, so.
Thank you.
I, I would also, I, I agree with Mr. Partridge there. And I feel like there's a potential, I think, for a more grassroots effort, not just amongst that neighborhood, but the rest of the community as well. To maybe, maybe we could facilitate or try and organize a community group that considers traffic, traffic issues throughout, throughout town. And, you know, maybe that could be a community group that we support as we do other community groups that could then buy signs that say, "Slow down, kids playing," that go in front yards or, you know, other grassroots-type things to, to help remind people to slow down.
Or to speak with their state legislators on, to bring this topic forward at the state level because it's impeding cities to be able to be responsive at this point without spending $5,000, and in this case, in a small neighborhood that is unlikely to meet that threshold at all.
So I, I'm not hearing a lot of people in, in favor of this. Do we want to take a vote on it tonight? Or do we want to table it until after we see what the legislature does?
I don't know how long the bid would be good for, but I'm okay tabling it. And if it needs to die on the vine, that's okay with me. That would be what I would, I would motion that we table the, the proposal for now.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
The motion is to table this for a future date.
I'll just table it indefinitely. Unless elements change, perhaps.
Is that doable? Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. All in favor of tabling this item, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item E, discussion of Chieftain Park improvement, improvements project, pardon me. Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Mayor. We tried not to create a tongue twister with this item, so apologies if we did. So we have a very brief presentation tonight, really aimed at spurring discussion amongst the city council for questions you may have. A quick overview is shown on slide two of the presentation, which you've got on the screen and also at the dais. You'll remember back in June at a budget work session, Tongonoxie Recreation Commission Director Brad Echols spoke before the governing body and, and made a case for cooperation between the Rec Commission and the city on a reconstruction and, and update of the Chieftain Park playground, which you see pictured in the image on this slide, in the center of the image. Since that date and the general support heard from the city council at that time, city staff and Recreation Commission staff have met and had multiple discussions aimed at starting the process of what this project and collaboration could look like. The identification of that process in the center of this set of five items was such that we believe that coming to agreement on a term sheet that outlines roles and responsibilities for each agency is really the best path forward before we go through the volume and detail of a full interlocal agreement, which is where in accordance with Kansas state law, both entities, one of which is allowed to do something by right, by state law, in the case of this being the city, allowed to issue debt or enter into a lease purchase agreement for repayment over a period of years, enters into an agreement with another public entity, in this case, the Rec Commission, who is not authorized by state statute to take those same actions. So for that reason, we would be required to do this in our local agreement, which we've done other ones in the past, such as the SRO, School Resource Officer Agreement, that some on the city council may remember entering into with the school district a number of years ago. Next steps on the project that could be somewhat concurrent with that effort to finish in our local agreement are securing financing for the project. And we'll have more details on that later on. And finally, project procurement steps and construction phase work for the project. We'll also have a little more information on that as we go forward. But in general, that's the process outlined and, and where we stand today again is right before step three of this process. So we have two slides now with additional information. And this is the entirety of the presentation. And what we'd like to highlight is that city staff have meetings scheduled with Mr. Echols and likely have discussions scheduled with him and his board of, of five members of the Recreation Commission in the next several months. Some of the things that need to be negotiated and agreed to in the term sheet include the definition and the scope of project costs. So the city, in our current configuration, has some ability to provide in-kind services in support of the project. And we think that's valuable in recognizing and also recognizing whether the city's comfortable with committing to make that service provision. A couple of examples of that would be the Public Works Department helping with their equipment that we, we maintain for other purposes and demolishing the current equipment, removing it and some of the concrete stabilization that's underground underneath the mulch in the current playground. There's also contract administration in this case and in this scenario. If the city moves ahead as the property owner and enters into the lease purchase agreement, the city would be the contract holder for the construction and design contracts or contract. And the administration of that, processing pay apps, other steps would all be completed by city staff as, as we're able to do that. Other services that we feel should be likely assigned to either project costs within or, or outside the scope of the lease purchase agreement funded contract are professional services reimbursement of the city for our contracted partners. That includes the city attorney for legal review and preparation of the interlocal agreement and other necessary contracts. And then the engineering review necessarily, necessary by the city engineer as part of the evaluation of the site plan as proposed in this improvement. Those are important elements and we don't yet know a budget fully estimated for those costs. But we can anticipate that they should be able to be either worked into the overall contract for the project or funding agreements set up with the city and the Rec Commission directly outside of the interlocal agreement could handle those. On the other side of this slide, financing. The term and the maximum budget amount of the lease purchase agreement financing are both critical elements to come to agreement with the Rec Commission and the city council. Term being proposed is five years. That's a little shorter than our normal lease purchase repayment timeframe. But it also acknowledges the fact that this is not the only recreational asset in the community that's likely to need financing in the near future or medium-term future. If we were to extend this 10 or 15 or 20 years, we'd really been reaching the end of the lifespan of the, of the assets. Right now, although the current playgrounds lasted 25 years, estimates for new playground equipment look like 15, maybe 20 is a good best-case scenario with current construction materials. Maximum budget, if the Rec Commission is paying the full cost of the, of the lease purchase debt service over time, the city council doesn't have a ton of interaction with that. But I believe that what we can expect to see is somewhere in the neighborhood of $1 million as a total estimated project cost. And how that's broken out is still yet to be determined. But in early preliminary discussions with Mr. Echols, that's what we're understanding is likely to be submitted for the city's consideration. Finally, on this slide, the last item listed is the procurement methodology. Again, if the city is the property owner and the contract holder, a design-build contract, which is a single contract that would take us through the design phase to construction and completion, is a simpler approach. In the, in the issue of managing separate contracts and coordinating between contractors, we feel that the Rec Commission will agree that that's a better methodology to pursue for various reasons, including speaking to other communities that recently redeveloped community parks and playgrounds and, and saw value in that kind of approach. In accordance with our procurement policy, we also have the ability to not accept the absolute lowest cost bid, but to make a evaluated consideration of a bid by specified criteria. And so staff will work with the Rec Commission to develop what those criteria look like and make sure the city council is aware of that before you're being asked to make any decisions on awarding of a bid or a contract for the project. Any questions on this slide or comments before we move ahead? Okay. The last slide, a little bit more open-ended, but, but there are important items to think about as we advance towards making agreements with this other agency in our community. Project communication is going to be a key element. Public input, the level, the type, the manner, the weight given to it in the design phase in particular is going to be really important. I think the Rec Commission has acknowledged that they're aware of that. And so as, as the project plan is developed, there'll be a lot of attention paid to that, that element in particular. Communications planning with members of the public, patrons of the park, also need to take high priority. In terms of the city and the Rec Commission, we also need to clearly identify who will take the lead in that regard. I, I think that's a very key element that might be missing because it's not too much impact in terms of financial, but it is really in the way the public perceives the project and knows where they can make their voice heard. The consideration of safety is another really important element. We see that a lot in city projects across the city in various lines of work. But preserving the safety of the site, ensuring that patrons in the park don't climb fences or intrude in the workspace and become unsafe is really critical. And, and the city and the Rec Commission together will need to ensure that that's very clear and responsibilities are known and, and agreed to for that item. Timing of the project, while this reconstruction is underway, the, the park and the playground in that area of the park will necessarily need to be closed, likely for a period of several months. That's a very busy park. It's the only community-scale park in our town and, and in the Rec Commission district. So that's something to contemplate as we look at a schedule for this project and consider what season is best to schedule the work. It may make sense to wait longer to meet a non-peak time or a weather time when people aren't enjoying the playground as frequently. And that may be the middle of summer. It may be the middle of winter. It's, it's kind of yet to be determined. Finally, the other considerations that I think George and Brad and I would all agree are really important are to consider, in this case and in this project, future maintenance responsibilities, future, that ranges from mowing, minor fixes, programming and, and activities on the properties like the Chieftain Park. But also future capital needs. This, this is one capital project and one recreational asset in the community. Right now, the city owns and operates certain amenities of recreational nature. The Rec Commission owns some, the school owns others. And in a perfect world, that design would be very intentional and consistent. We don't live in that world right now. And as the years have gone on, we've actually gotten more kind of abnormal in that regard instead of more consistent. And so it may not all be wrapped up in this agreement and in this negotiation, I guess, with the other entity. But it is important that we all consider and think at a high level what makes sense now and what makes sense in the medium-term and the long-term to maybe realign what those current roles and, and positions in terms of recreational assets are in the community. Anything I missed, George, that you would add? Okay. All right. Any questions or comments for the city council?
Counsel, do you have any questions or conversation?
I think there's a lot to consider, a lot. You make a lot of really good points that we're going to have to work very closely with the, the Rec Commission to make sure that we're all on the same page on some very important stuff that people may not think about at first glance. So just would encourage staff to do a lot of due diligence to make sure that we don't overlook anything and that they understand that there's certain stuff that has to be done to, for liability reasons or other, to make sure everybody's protected.
I agree. And to figure out what if that, say the budget is a million dollars, what if that will be equipment versus soft costs to the city versus services in, in kind? And where can we find that? We shouldn't go into this with any of that being gray. Maybe having an opportunity to meet with some of the people from there. They have, who, you guys, some of you have served on the rec board before, haven't you? Yeah, some of the rec board folks and some of the. Yeah, some of the Rec Board folks and some of the City Council folks to talk together because they'll have their own perspective and we'll have our perspective, you know, looking at, we have overlapping interests for the best of the community, but well, it'd be nice to have them hear our perspective and us hear their perspective. So, you know, coordinating immediately, that is challenging, but that might be good for everybody involved.
Mr. Dale, did you have any input?
No. No, it all makes sense.
I really appreciate this detailed plan. It's something I wish we had done with the library, but none of us has built a library before, so live and learn, and I think we learned. So this looks good. Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Thank you all. Appreciate your comments.
Item six on the agenda is the city manager agenda and July 2025 financial report. Mr. Barkovich? Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. The financial reports included in your agenda packet for review tonight, I'll be brief in my review of it with you all. We're 58% of the way through this fiscal year at the end of July. We've just commenced, actually after the end of this monthly period, with the majority of our principal and interest payments owed for our debt obligations, so you'll see more on that subject in upcoming reports. We still maintain a little more than $370,000 in ARPA funds due to be spent by the end of next year. The recently advertised wastewater treatment plant expansion project will utilize the full value of those remaining funds, and we're confident that the schedule will conclude that spending before the end of next year as required. Page two and three of the report show major non-utility and utility fund revenue and expenditure pace compared to the prior year and compared to the current year budget. On page four of the report, an outline of sales tax detailed receipts is shown. You can see that in total city and total county sales tax, we're currently sitting at almost 7%, almost 3% ahead of last year's pace. And if you look back two years, we're just a tick over two years' pace, two years ago, which had been the record pace of receipts through this portion of the fiscal year looking back. So we're happy to be in that position. We see strong continued performance that has stayed steady this year. One thing that we did want to kind of bring to discussion is staff had completed internal analysis of sales tax trends and NAICS codes that we've presented to you all for your information one or two months of each fiscal year. There are services available that firms like our financial advisor, Baker Tilly, are able to offer, which sort of streamlines that and could include it in either every monthly report or quarterly reports. And so if that's something the City Council is interested in, I would encourage you to talk to George or myself about that, and it's something that we could contract with those firms to make available on a more regular basis for your contemplation and review. So that's not included in this report, but just wanted to highlight that that is an element that we've investigated and gotten some information about recently. The rest of the financial report is shown in the traditional sense, revenue expenditure, revenue trends by subcategory and by fund in a rolled-up sense, expenditure trends by category are also shown, and fund balance reports conclude the report. Happy to take any questions you have or any feedback at this time, and we do also anticipate next month having the opportunity to share with you a nearly complete picture of the water park performance through the entire summer season.
I was going to ask about that. Do we have July figures yet?
We do, yes, we have July.
What was the gross, in terms of attendance?
Oh, let's see. I need to get that. I'm sorry, I don't have that yet.
Don't worry about it, it's fine.
Any more questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Porter. Anything more, Mr. Barkovich?
No further items.
All right. Item seven on the agenda is the city attorney agenda. Ms. Kirstelich, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem agenda, Ms. Stevens?
Not this evening, thank you.
Item nine, the city council agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to mention?
I do, and I'll be super brief. Tonight, our audit was on the agenda, and as I was thinking about this meeting coming up, you know, kind of thinking about best practices on our audit process, I think the city needs to consider for next year potentially pursuing the idea of forming an audit committee of a couple city council members and a mayor to, as a best practice, an audit committee effectively serves as sort of a conduit between the city and the auditor, but more importantly, I think, there's a few different things here I just want to mention real quick. This report that we see is a little bit of the auditor's report, but it's mostly the city's, it's the city's financials that we report that the auditors are providing an opinion on. And one of the most important parts of that is the internal controls and the control environment, and ultimately, in the auditor's point of view, the people that have responsibility for that is governance, which means us. And we should, in theory, especially as we get bigger, it becomes more difficult for a city to have an idea of what the control environment even is. And so an audit committee, one of the purposes of an audit committee is to be experts in what the financial report reports. So I think there's some areas on our notes, the financial statements, that we could potentially edit or amend in terms of the detail and the information that we provide. And anyway, I'm going too long on this, but one of, it's something that I would say cities about this size typically have, or as we get bigger, will need to consider doing. And I think it's, doesn't, you know, they're really, the cost is nothing. Doesn't change the scope of the audit, doesn't, makes the auditor's life easier, just takes a little bit of time from some people on the board to kind of wrap their head around the hard accounting side of the city and trying to make our practices align with the best practices in municipal reporting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Anyone have anything else? Okay, mayor agenda. I had a question from a citizen about getting rid of some branches that he had laying around. Will the city have a big item, what would you say, collection, anytime soon, or is that just during storms?
Yeah, Mayor, we typically only provide a drop-off point after storms. You know, that, I would suggest that that's up to the homeowner to find a place to dispose of that.
Okay.
If they trim it down, that it will fit in leaf and lawn bags, they will pick it up anytime with your regular pickup.
That's fair. That's true. Okay. I have one other item in executive session, and Mr. Partridge has the wording on that.
I move that the city council recess into executive session to obtain legal advice about requirements for potential future RHIDs in the city pursuant to the attorney-client consultation exception in KSA 75-4319 subsection B2. The executive session will include the city attorney, city manager, assistant city manager, and city clerk. The open meeting will resume in the city council chamber at 8:09 PM.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're now in executive session. We're back in open session, and let's the record show that no binding action was taken. We're back in open session, and it's a record show that no binding action was taken in the executive session. That's it for me. Does anyone have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Thank you, gentlemen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? See you in a couple weeks.